Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, okay.
Sure.
But the record show that all board members are present except Devon and Jim Tomsky. Our school board showcase tonight is um the Career Academies with Heather Sorenson and students. Welcome and come on up.
Welcome. Yeah, you walked in the door and you're going on like that.
Just to them, I just said here.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
And I'll come over here.
Okay.
And and just as you are getting ready to go, I mean, we're just so thankful that you uh were able to come and share your story with us. Uh this evening, this is one of the things that um I know that the board um it's a special. It's a special project, something that we've been talking about and working on for several years and it's exciting. That we are really starting to see some growth and progress, so we're excited to hear uh from you tonight.
Okay, so.
Just.
Okay, there we go. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Heather Sorenson and I am the new Youth Skills Training Coordinator. And like Sue said, I'm here to talk a little bit about uh the Career Academies and I brought a student with. Um Emma and she will talk a little bit in a moment. I can figure out how to advance here. Okay, so I don't know how much information you all know about the academies already. Uh so I have a little bit of background information first and then we'll let Emma do some talking too. Uh but so first of all, our purpose, so um four points, one to connect students to real world outside experiences. And through the academies, we do that in many ways, one in the classroom setting, we're able to. Uh give them experiences that can help them understand what goes on in our businesses and um in the area and. Um also getting students out into the community, into businesses through job shadows. Um through uh tours and then internships, what we like to call our YST experiences. Um second point is to make academies viable for all students and I think we have done a really good job of that. We have students from um valedictorians to students who had maybe haven't always found success in the traditional classroom. All in different academies, we have students who are very interested in science or students who are in arts. Um students who are uh talented in construction, um all in different academies. So I think that purpose, we've done a very good job at. And the second, our third one, um provide a rigorous program with meaning and relevance to the field. Um we want our students to leave the their classes with experiences that meet industry standards. And then finally, the fourth one, align our current program to the Minnesota Career Wheel. And you are looking at the career wheel there, um this was developed by the city of Minnesota. Education Minister or Department of Education is what I meant to say. And you'll see that there are six different career fields on that wheel. Um just for example, at the top in green, um is the agriculture, food and natural resources career field. The bottom um in red, the health, science, technology career field, and then all of the others that are there. And intentionally, we have six career academies and they are um aligned to these career fields directly. Um in order to graduate with an academy, there are some requirements. Um to graduate with the academy, you need to have five entry level course credits. Um and then two intermediate level course credits, so each academy has several classes that are entry level classes. And several classes that are intermediate level, so to be in an academy, you need to have the five from the entry level and then two from the intermediate. Um in addition to that, students can choose to um be recognized with advanced achievement. In order to do this, the students need to um be in a youth skills training experience or an internship. And then create a portfolio and uh give a presentation to a panel of um individuals uh from that academy. So we have our six academies um start out with. We have our Business Management and Administration Academy and I've listed all of the entry level. Courses and intermediate level courses that we have um within that academy there. I'm not going to read through them or anything, but um you'll see that some of our academies have more entry level courses than others. Um and oftentimes in those situations, we end up having more students in those academies with the more entry level and intermediate courses. Um Business Management and Administration, we don't have a ton of students in this academy. Um I think this will come as our business department has a little bit more stability. Um and and grow some there. Um then we have our Information Systems, Communications and Art Academy, we have many students in this academy. Um mainly, um the students in this academy are coming through the pathway of the art. Uh section, uh we have a strong art department and a strong music department. Um if a student comes into high school and they are in band or choir and continuing band or choir throughout. They will more than likely uh be able to graduate into them in academy. I would say we need a little bit more on the information systems and communications uh avenues. And we have our Human Services Academy. Um this one, we have fewer courses in, I would like for us to develop more courses to fall into this area. Um and then our Agriculture and Natural Resources Academy, which um looks small in regard to entry level courses. Um we have more courses in the egg department that can fall into that entry level. But we do not have the intermediate level courses to provide for that pathway, so those will be added once we have. Um an intermediate course to go along with the entry level. And then we have our Engineering, Manufacturing and Technology Academy, this is by far our strongest academy. Um which makes sense, um because of the fact that we were operating on the YST grant with a focus on this academy for two years. Um and therefore, we have many students in this academy or on their way to completing the requirements for this academy. And then finally, our Health Science Academy um is listed there. We have a few students working towards this academy, but um many that are interested in going into this career field. So I think that this is um a good area for growth for our future. Our current goals have persisted to increase awareness for staff, students, parents, business leaders and the community. Um since stepping into this position, I have learned that many of our staff members. Don't really know anything about the academies and they um don't even realize they're teaching a course that's in an academy. So I think that needs to change um our students. Um I met with some, a group of from Student Council, Winnie was in that group and um I think. Winnie knew that academies existed, but not all of the students did, so I think we need more awareness there. And then parents, they can always help direct students. Um business leaders definitely, so we can uh build partnerships and then the community. Um we are working to increase that awareness, Student Council is helping me out with a social media campaign at the current time. Um staff meetings, newsletters, uh presentations at class meetings, uh videos for advisories. Flyers for businesses, meetings with businesses, uh these are all of uh in my plans for how we can increase that awareness. Um and then we have Career Academy audits coming up on the fourteenth where the students will fill out a form. Um to mark down what classes they have taken um and what classes they're maybe taking throughout the remainder of the year. So they can see where they are in regard to academies and so I can uh determine which students would be good for a YST experience. Um and then that can help us develop those business partnerships, if I have students um that I know. Uh it's a good academy and wants a position at a business, I think that's going to help us get that partnership with that business. Um specific goals for this year, um we want to have a minimum of forty students graduating in an academy. And then ten students in a YST experience. Um right now, we just have one student, so this is a will be a. A big jump, which will be good. Um and then finally, um I am working with Jessica, Tom Gunderson and um Cam Young at the Chamber. Um on writing up a YST grant application. Uh with a focus on the Health Science Academy, we have two confirmed business partners and then um one potential. And I also am help Fairview being a potential and then also have started speaking with Cassia Life or Elon Holmes. So um hopefully they will jump in as well. So with that, um I hope to have two students here today. Um Cooper uh this afternoon questioned whether he could be here. Um I have Bill talk a little bit about uh Cooper's experience, he did share some things with me today. Uh but maybe we'll start with Emma. Well, Emma, I'm just gonna ask her questions and she's going to answer and if you guys have questions, please uh go ahead and ask them as well. Uh so first of all, Emma, what are your career or college goals?
My goals are to get M T certified, go on to paramedic school, and then the final goal is helicopter medic.
Helicopter medic, isn't that awesome? Um what academy will you graduate with? The Health Science Academy, uh and she's been working hard focusing her classes for that academy, it seems. Um can you describe your experiences in your career academy courses, maybe in particular your current CNA course?
Um they have been filled with a lot of opportunities. I um like dissections, um getting to speak with professionals, super again. And that system, health system. Getting certified for my CNA class and home health aid, I can bring that too. Um you just show up every day and learn something new.
Awesome. Um and what skills do you think you've gained through your Career Academy courses?
Um I can uh learn like the basic knowledge of the human body, how the. Of the healthcare system works, how to perform skills for patients of all needs and ages. And how to communicate the patients and their families and coworkers.
And then um in what ways do you feel that this will benefit you in the future?
Um I think I'll benefit in having a head start in my career. Um and then these skills that aren't just having, being able to build off of them. And it's just taught me that paramedics is really important in my future.
We got some questions, we have a student.
Uh agent say her, does she, you're gonna see, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you're real first or first one.
Yeah.
So is there a chance that we'll be able to get her matched with a business partner in the field yet this year?
We, well, I think we've had some communication about this as a possibility. Emma was planning to graduate early, so she will have all of the courses that she needs for graduation after second trimester. But we have started talking about the possibility of a placement in third trimester, um a YST experience for her, so. Would be awesome.
So may- maybe you you mentioned this, but. What student, every student, are we talking? Nine through twelve, or is it just seniors?
In an academy?
Yeah. Do an academy or?
Or doing a YST experience.
Either one.
Either one. Um generally, a person, a student wouldn't reach the ability to do I, to be in the academy. Or to have a YST experience until probably their junior year. I have a few students in their junior year that are eligible for the experience because you need to complete the academy work before you can do the experience. And so it's usually a junior year.
Okay, and are the, is this targeted towards specific, is it any student in those that age range or is are you targeting certain?
Any students that takes the courses that allows them to uh be fit into one of the academies. And um you know, I don't think we expect every student to be in an academy. Some students are going to dabble with all sorts of different areas and maybe not find that path and stick with it the whole time and that's okay. Um but then others, um such as Emma or um Cooper, who I'll tell you a little bit about here too. Um Cooper for sure, I think, his freshman year, he started taking courses um that completely fit with. Uh the Manufacturing Technology and Engineering Academy and he has completed a lot of the classes in there. And it's a really good fit for him.
And the, and graduating from an academy that. There's, there's still graduation requirements on top of that as well, correct?
Yeah.
So really, they're, they're adding whole, not just working towards graduation, but they're also adding all of this on top of. Their workload or is this, this kind of, does it run concurrently with, with it?
It should, it will do both, like, like students will earn credits toward, towards graduation while customizing their path. Towards a desired uh career of their choice that they would like to move towards.
So um you know, the students have a certain number of electives that they have to take. Um and their electives that they have to take for graduation um can be driven in that customized education towards their career path.
And Emma, have you contacted North Ambulance or North Air Care?
I have been up to North Ambulance pay.
Okay.
They are pretty. Good at giving information out and really, pretty willing to get kids in to whatever they need to get into coming with them.
Are you able to go out on, on like a ride along?
They don't do ride alongs, they did um give me a few examples of other places that just.
Great, okay.
I'll tell you a little bit about Cooper as well, Cooper is our student that is in a YST experience at the current time. Um like I said, he's in the Engineering, Manufacturing and Technology Academy, um and he's taken seven of the. Um entry level courses and working on his fourth uh intermediate course, which is. Um from all of the students that I've kind of gone through and done an audit for is a significant number. He is, like I said, in a youth skills training experience right now, he's uh doing his work at Glen Metal Craft or Element Group. Um he's a spin operator and um today, when I talked to him, when he said he wasn't sure he was going to make it. Which, by the way, he is at Glen Metal Craft right now. Um he said the skills that he's learned uh at Glen Metal Craft are um problem solving and teamwork. And the one he was most excited about is um operation of automation. Um he said the course that he has taken that has been the most beneficial for this experience is the technology and engineering class. And that he feels that this is opening up a lot of opportunities for him. Um. His uh supervisor said that he is um currently working at a rate above standard, they feel. And a quote from his supervisor, um I feel as do others who work with Cooper, that Cooper shows a lot of potential. He is willing to do all that is asked of him without hesitation and gives all assigned tasks the same level of commitment. And then I spoke with um someone from Human Resources at Glen Metal Craft the other day and she mentioned that. They all really hope that Cooper will stay on even after the YST experience. And when I let him know that, he was very excited and he said he has every intention of continuing. Um that relationship at Glen Metal Craft, he's having a great time there and learning a lot, so.
Probably a really dumb question, um are they being paid, like is he being paid for the YST experience as well?
Yes, there will be internships.
Alright.
And um when I was speaking with uh the person from the H R department at Glen Metal Craft. Um she was at the high school for mock interviews and just desserts interview uh session the other day. And she happened to meet with one of our other students who is interested in going into engineering and they very much want her. Um at Glen Metal Craft and today she sent me a list of, um these are some of the tasks that she might be able to do if we can get her place there. So um lots of potential, I think, and that's exciting.
As far as the, you had a goal, you may have said your goal of forty, is that next year then?
Uh for this year.
Oh, you'll get.
This school year, forty, yeah, uh that was forty graduating with an academy.
Yeah.
And then hopefully we can get ten in a YST experience. And today I spoke to, I think, four or five students um who I have gone through and kind of done their audits for them. Um and spoke with them and talked about the opportunities and many of them were very excited about the possibility, so.
He, it's taken a long time to get here, I mean, it's, it's taken longer than we would have liked to get here. I mean, because we've started some of the planning um several years ago and. Um we, we were really slowed down with the pandemic and and now, you know, we are, we are really starting to get some traction. And momentum and I think I really do feel confident that things are gonna start really rolling and we'll start getting. Lots more students involved in this program, we have the right person in this role i- in in Heather and. But there's so many different layers to, to all of this that goes into it and I just want the board to know that, you know, this is something that in the future. Uh I may be uh inquiring with you of the possibilities of increasing um resources. Because it's a huge, it's a huge job and there's multiple layers associated with this because we're really talking about customizing. Every student's experience going through the high school. And there's lots of pieces, there's a, there's a huge amount of guidance, uh you know, in terms of the counseling and. Um educating the students on what these opportunities are and exposing them. And then helping counsel them and guide them through, you know, what are the different prerequisite kinds of courses that they would need to have. And able to be able to get into one of their pathways. And ultimately, you know, the goal is to have as many students as possible, have a culmination, a culminating activity that's authentic. It's real life kinds of things where they're out in the field in their desired uh pathways. And the reality is, is um we know that some students might, there might be just as many students that go down a pathway and find out that. Um boy, this isn't really what I want to do and that's okay. But you know, what that does is that maybe decreases the chances of that student going to a four-year college. For two or three years and spending fifty to a hundred thousand dollars of tuition before they decide that that's not for them. Right, so we can give them some exposure ahead of time and every culminating. Experience and every one of these pathways will look a little bit different. You know, some might be paid, some might not be paid, some will be, you know, that's just gonna be very different. Another, you know, part of this too is just the, the. Building partnerships with each of these different businesses, right? And every one of these businesses have different requirements, some by law that, you know, they, some can't even have. Student, you know, people under the age of eighteen in their, in their building, right? And there's certain OSHA requirements and state requirements, so you know, that's like um something that Heather, when she's meeting with each of these business partners. Has to run through a filter, like what are the requirements for each of these possibilities? And I'll just throw this out there because she's here, the Union Times journalist, is that, you know, there may be. A student that wants to be a journalist, right, and what a great partnership we're possibility, you know, that's the kind of thing where maybe we can have a. Uh Union Times a partner.
Definitely. Heather Westlake, like Cooper, is at Glen Metal Craft, how long can he stay there as part of this? Or is it one trimester and you move on or how does that work?
No, Cooper was there last spring, he started our third trimester, he is there now. And the plan is that he's there the rest of this school year.
Are they released early from school or not necessarily?
Yep, he, they can be, um they, he leaves, he works on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. And he leaves uh during sixth hour, so the last hour of the day.
So he's essentially just using one of those elective periods for that?
Yep.
And, and part of this too is just like, you're almost serving as a matchmaker, right? Like, you know, what, what Emma wants to go into this field, all right, so who do we know with all of our relationships that we can? Get her connected with the right people at, at Fairview or, you know, wherever it might be to, to get what she wants. So there's gonna be a lot of that that happens too.
One of Cooper's friends said, wait a second, the school helped you find a job?
So have you um had any talks with the union, with the union forty-nine, because I know they got four young, four high schoolers. And they come all with, you know, a certificate and go into a new job.
I have not, but I would love to have that conversation.
I know they got uh training school over at Hinkley.
Okay.
And I know there's some in the areas, that would be a huge opportunity for your construction and. And because if they start getting some of their hours in, they can, when they graduate, they can go right into.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Heather?
Well, thank you so much, you know, I, I started with, with this and I'll end with that, I mean, this is, this is, you know. High priority for our school district to um see move forward and, and I think that because it's a priority. We need to be, we, we will need to be having discussions and listening to you in terms of what are the needs to continue to build this program.
Okay.
So, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you. Don't feel like you need to say.
There are no citizens comments, we'll move on to reports and we'll start with school board, our member committee reports and we'll start with John. Um no committees.
Uh nothing.
I had um agenda planning and I uh attended the C regional meeting in Cambridge. And um I also attended the musical, which was amazing as usual, Winnie, you were wonderful.
Thank you.
And um that is just such a, that's such a blessing for the district. All this community involvement, that's up to those people, correct?
I have nothing to report. I am not good.
Okay. And Winnie?
So right now, the month that is kind of the focus for the C C four L committee is Career Month. Which is very similar like in some ways to College Knowledge Month, like there's some overlaps, but we're not focusing just on. College related careers, which is kind of like expanding beyond it more. And one thing that we're focusing on is of course the career clusters, which Mrs. Sorenson just explained a lot. But we're also doing interviews with di- different businesses in town, so one person on the committee I know. Has been like calling different businesses and conducting interviews and then we're gonna put those on the district page. And then we're also interviewing different teachers and kind of explaining their career paths too. And another thing is, I know next week we're starting up the Superintendent Student Board again. And so that will open up opportunities for students to share their opinions on different subjects. Like anything that they think is an issue, we can discuss as a group with Mr. Barton.
Thank you. And Superintendent Report.
I'm glad you brought that up, I'm excited to get that going and uh we're, we're trying to get it going at the middle school as well, so that will be exciting. I think it's just important for us to have student voice. Um we need to always remember that we're here for the students, the students have, uh they live it every day. We need to listen to them and uh we need to get their, their feedback. I wanna echo um your acknowledgement of the, the play, it was amazing. Um I wanna uh share with the board that we had a pretty incredible um. The Veterans Day throughout the district. At the high school, the students put on that uh ceremony and that's always great to have student led. And then uh at the other buildings, there was a parade. You may have seen, seen some things about that and that's something that's uh just a big deal and throughout the, this, all of the school. Even lead, leading up to Veterans Day, uh they were having uh veterans coming in throughout the week, just. Even lead, leading up to Veterans Day, uh, they were having, uh, veterans come in throughout the week, just, uh, talking to the students about their experiences. So it's something I, that I feel really good about, um, in our district. Uh, I, I had an opportunity two weeks ago to go to what's called the Leah, uh, banquet. Um, to acknowledge our teachers of the year. Uh, that was a great event. And tomorrow evening I will be going to St. Howard, uh, for a similar event, but it's for support staff. Uh, members. So that will be happening tomorrow. I wanna congratulate, um, our newly elected school board members and thank. Uh, the community members, uh, for coming out to vote and all of those that ran. Um, it's, it's a huge job. In my opinion, one of the most important, uh, jobs and in communities and we thank you for that. On the same lines of the, the, the elections. Uh, you know, there was, uh, significant impacts, uh, happening at the legislature. I'm sure you've seen that. The Democrats now control the host and the Senate and the governorship, which, um. You know, it'll be interesting to see what that means for education. And, uh, I will be connecting with our new legislators. That, that we'll be working with, uh, here shortly. One cool thing I wanted to mention. And I'll, I'll have to show you some pictures of this after last week. What day is it today? Must, what day was Veterans Day? Friday? After the high school Veterans Day event, I was invited to go into. I don't know if it was a high school, um, anatomy and physiology class or. Uh, advanced biology kind of class. And we had an opportunity, the students had an opportunity to do a virtual Zoom meeting, if you will. With a doctor and a cadaver. And the students were able to, um, ask real-time questions. Of the doctor, the doctor did an amazing job going through all of the different systems of the body. And that's just an example of, you know, some of the things that we're doing. And we've been doing it all across our system, but that's a great example of how we utilize technology to really be a window to the world. Where our students can, can experience things wi- without actually needing to be there. Uh, the last thing I'll leave you with is that, uh, you all should be receiving a communication here. In the next several days from Emily regarding the M S B conference that will, uh, become out. She may have already sent you something, but. Um, we'll be, we'll be trying to get that all coordinated. So be thinking if that's something that, uh, we'll be able to fit your schedule for this year. Uh, because we'll be asking.
Yeah, she sent that out today.
Um, so I'll close my remarks unless you have any questions.
Any questions for them? Okay, we will move on to approve the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes from October eighteenth, their motion to approve the minutes. So, motion made by Don, is there a second? Second by Eric Mings, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all members say, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Eric Mings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the information part of our meeting and, um, that is the audit. And I think Michelle's on Zoom and. Nancy.
Hi, Michelle. Do some, um, uh, do some introductions here and then we can get rolling with our presentation of the audit.
Yeah, we have Nancy Schultz-umberg from Bergen K D V. I don't think I'm used to that Bergen yet. Um, they do our audit every year. They're. Pretty good to work with and we really, uh, appreciate the time that they spend making sure that what we've done. Is, uh, correct. It's Nancy, you wanna take it away?
Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, everyone. Members of the board administration. I'm happy to be here tonight to go over the results of our audit. So I am gonna share my screen. I pulled the highlights of the audit into a PowerPoint. And please let me know that you are seeing independent school district number four seven seven.
Yes, we see it.
Perfect. So to begin with, uh, we have several communications that we issue as part of the audit. If I can get my screen to roll, there we go. Uh, and the first one and the most important one is the independent auditors report. And this is housed in the front of the financial statements. Summarizes the fact that these financial statements are management's responsibility and it was our responsibility to issue an opinion. And what we're issuing is an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we as your auditors can offer. Indicates that everything was fairly presented based on the results of the audit. So it is a clean opinion, if you will. And then in addition to that, also housed in the back of the financial statements, uh, several other letters. The first one is our report related to government auditing standards. So all school districts in the state of the, of Minnesota are required to follow these standards. And they require us as auditors to look closer at internal controls and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts and grants. And based on the work that we did, uh, we did not have any written internal control findings, which is rare for school districts. And we also did not have any compliance findings related to those standards that we tested. The next letter has to do with, uh, the federal funds that you received. It is, uh, our results on the single audit, which is what we call the, the testing of your federal programs. And related to the compliance surrounding the federal programs that we tested, we're issuing an unmodified opinion there as well. And then also no internal control findings as it relates to that compliance. So a clean report related to the federal funds. And then our last official letter has to do with Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor of Minnesota is very specific about the statutes they request us to look at and report on. And so it covers seven broad categories of legal compliance and based on the work there, no findings as well. So. No written findings. So congratulations to the districts for all of that. Uh, in addition to the financial statement document, we issue a communication letter. In there, uh, financial analysis, which we will cover tonight, there is several pages titled Required Communication. So this is. A section that includes things that our standards require that we put in writing to you as the governing board. It would be our tool if we had any difficulties or disagreements with management or anything significant or unusual that we uncovered. Happy to report tonight that nothing strays from our standard language in that section. And then finally, in the back of that letter, there is some exciting accounting information. First of all, a legislative summary. The latest from the Department of Education and then some emerging issues that relate to some new government accounting standards that will be coming in the next several years. So with that, I will move to, uh, some financial information. So general education aid is your largest funding source. At the district. So we take a little bit of time tonight to go over the components of the calculation of that aid. Starting with the basic formula allowances, that is what you see on this chart. And we've given you some history going back to two thousand twelve. But keying in on twenty twenty-two, you can see that you did receive two and a half percent. Uh, which is higher than what you're used to seeing and a little bit higher than what you will be getting for twenty twenty-three, going back down to two percent. And then the other part of that calculation has to do with student count. So we have a lot of information that takes a look at that in a lot of different ways. And the first chart, uh, takes a look at your residents. So these are students that live within Princeton's boundaries that either attend a public school or charter school. Uh, that number has been relatively stable. If you look at the five years that we're looking at, down about two point nine percent over those five years. And when we key into twenty-one versus twenty-two, you can see it increased about fifty-three students, which is a one and a half percent increase. So a little bit of a rebound. After a fairly sizable drop in twenty twenty-one. The next chart takes a look at that same information in graphical format, um, so that we can see things differently. And if you look at this, you can see that each category. Did have increases. So that was spread across all of your grade levels, those fifty-three students. And then when we look at actually calculating general education aid, we take those residents, we weight them based on grade level and then we factor in and out open enrollment. And that's what you're seeing on this chart. So if you look at the top, there are your weighting factors, one point zero across the board with one point two for your secondary. And then the bottom portion takes a look at those adjusted numbers. So you can see the change in residence, um, up from. Similar to the previous page. And then we have open enrollment. So you did have five hundred and ninety students going elsewhere. But two hundred and seventy-three students coming in from other districts. So overall, this number increased about two point two percent or about fifty-four students. And again, this chart looks at the same information in a graphical format. And highlights the relative consist- consistency overall, a little bit of a decline in twenty twenty-one and a rebound in twenty twenty-two. Um, overall, seven point eight percent of your population is coming from residents outside the Princeton district. And then one more chart, um, taking a look at those percentage changes. And again. Um, seeing those decreases in twenty twenty-one and the increases in twenty twenty-two. I will switch gears to some actual dollar amounts. And this is a graph that takes a look at your revenues in the general fund by source. Overall, general revenues or general fund revenues, excuse me, were up about two percent. And, um, about seven hundred and seventy thousand. And the biggest increase came in your state sources, which is the middle section there, the blue section. That is your state sources that represents eighty-one point eight percent of your total revenues. So that's really the big driver of the revenues in the general fund. And it increased about five hundred and sixteen thousand. Based on that increase in enrollment, uh, the increase in the formula allowance, those were the two main components of the overall increase in state sources. The bottom or the gray portion there represents your local property taxes. That did increase about two hundred and sixty thousand with the increase in the levy for the year. And then on the top, the green portion, that is the other, which includes local sources and federal sources. Um, and any other sales or conversion of assets. That was very similar to what you saw in twenty twenty-one. Next couple of pages, we have some information that takes a look at your revenues and expenditures per student served. And we take a look at the revenues first because the revenues are gonna drive the expenditures in the district. So when we compare, um, your district, which is the top portion of the chart here, you can see for twenty-one versus twenty-two, it was a little bit of a decrease overall. And that had to do with your student serve increase being greater than the increase in the revenues overall. When we take it back a year to twenty twenty-one and compare you to statewide averages, you can see that you are consistently below. In each of the years prior, twenty-one through twenty eighteen. And it comes across all your categories. So this really just has to do with the demographics of the students that you serve and, um, the residence area of your district. It's a lot of, a lot of different variables that go into those numbers, but it's kind of nice to see the comparison, uh, just as that baseline. And then like I mentioned, expenditures on the next page, you're gonna see a very similar situation. Expenditures were up about six point one percent. So, uh, you did see an increase in the expenditure per student. But if we look back to twenty-one and prior, you can see that consistently here as well below the statewide average. Next, we have a couple of pie charts to take a look at those expenditures in the general fund. And like I mentioned, they were up six point one percent or about two point three million. Across the category. So nothing in particular that jumps out and primarily related to increases in salaries and benefits, which you have every year. Um, if you look at the categories, the percentages of the whole, you can see that they are very consistent, uh, year over year. And you're spending about sixty-five, sixty-six percent of your total on direct instruction, which includes the regular instruction, vocational instruction and special education instruction. And here we have budget to actual information for the general fund. And I think it's, it's good for the board to look at this. Because this is the plan that you had set out for the district and administration implemented that plan. And these are the results. So if we look at, um, the left column, that was the original budget. Uh, anticipated deficit spending of about two point eight million. That budget was modified, um, anticipating one point six million dollars in deficit spending. And then the actual is gonna be the third column where you can see that you did deficit spend, but it was about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So you did outperform that budget. And when we look to the far right, that's gonna be the variance and follow that buck up to your total revenues. You can see in total revenues were about. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over budget, which is a point three percent variance. So really very, very close to what you had anticipated. Following that variance column down, um, to total expenditures, those were under budget about seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, which is two percent. So again, very close to what you had anticipated. If you look at a couple of the categories that show some larger variances, first of all, your elementary and secondary regular instruction. Um, you had minimal activity in those activity accounts. So that accounted for that difference there. Um, in instructional support sever- services, fewer supplies than what you were planning in the budget. And pupil support services, you had lower special education transportation costs than what you were anticipating. And then finally, offsetting those under budgets, you were over budget in sites and buildings and that had to do with the hockey arena lease. There were new, uh, lease standards implemented from accounting perspective this year. So that is an expenditure. And also in other financing source, which you'll see further down, um, that increase of four hundred and twenty-three thousand. The next chart, uh, rolls the general fund all together and looks at it high level and then also looks at all of the components of the fund balance. So we talked already about the increase in revenues and the increase in expenditures and that overall decrease in your fund balance of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And when we look at your fund balance, um, that each and every category is listed below. The top line there is your non-spendable. That's money that has already been paid and is not available for the future. So that's segregated. And then we have the restricted reserves, which are mandated by the state of Minnesota in statute, um, specific revenue streams to be spent in a specific way. Those numbers, not a lot of variance, uh, when you look year over year. Then we have a committed for separation benefits that has been approved by the board and is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand at the end of the year. The assignments are set aside locally, um, for specific purposes. And again, not a lot of change from twenty-one to twenty-two. The biggest change is in that unassigned number, which is two numbers up from the bottom. Um, that is down about three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the year and represents about twelve point six. Or just over one and a half months of expenditures based on twenty twenty-two spending levels. Your policy outlines a minimum of ten. So you are in compliance with that policy at the end of the year. And then one more chart, taking a look at the fund balance again in the general fund, but a little different way. So this is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of unrestricted expenditures. So it includes the committed, the assigned, the unassigned and also the non-spendable. And then the restricted expenditures are also subtracted out. So the state of Minnesota calculates this for us. It would be a complicated calculation for us to do. And when we look at this, historically, um, you have been pretty close to where statewide averages are. And if we compare twenty-one to twenty-two, you can see that you did decrease from twenty-two point seven percent down to twenty-one percent. Uh, which is also, again, very close to that twenty percent. We've seen twenty percent average across the state for, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent for a lot of years. And I just have two more charts and these take a look at your special revenue fund. So starting with food service, food service had a very unusual year. In twenty twenty-two with free meals, both breakfast and lunch for all students. So, um, reimbursement rates were also increased. So you had a forty-six percent increase in your revenues. With the additional meal served, you did also have a thirty-three percent increase in your expenditures, just with additional cost to provide those meals. Uh, so overall fund balance increased about seven, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, ending at just over two point one million. So, we've seen this across the state of Minnesota that these funds are accumulating. And hopefully we'll be able to weather increased food costs in those, those things going forward, additional costs going forward. And then the last fund is your community service fund. You had pretty significant increases in just overall activity. In this fund with increased programming with less COVID restrictions in twenty twenty-two. So fund balance up about two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And when we look to the bottom of this chart. This fund is segregated by specific categories. And you can see that each category of your fund balance is in a positive position. This year and each of the five years that we're looking at. So, um. Congratulations to whoever's working on that fund as well, because that is not typically the picture that we see. Usually there's at least one of those programs that's struggling a little bit. So it appears that. Uh, the revenues and fees charged are covering the costs, um, to allow you to have a little bit of a fund balance at the end of the year. Any questions? I can see I still have Caroline's name on here, but she wasn't able to be with us tonight. So.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, um, just so I, I make sure that I'm understanding this right. And it's on. Yeah, I have a, I have a question, just so I, I make sure that I'm understanding this right. And it's on slide number eleven. And that is. Now, just so I'm, I'm right on this. This is the amount of revenue that we receive in Princeton. Open out with local property taxes and state property taxes. Is that correct? Revenue per, per student?
Yes, we take the total revenue by the average daily membership served.
Okay, so if, if I'm reading this right, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Is that the, the Princeton Public Schools is, is receiving one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil unit. I'm looking at twenty twenty-one, right? Not twenty twenty-two. One thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil unit from local property taxes. And the state average of all the other communities in the state of Minnesota. The state average is two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars per pupil unit. That state, the state average for revenue received from local property tax, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So essentially, Princeton is educating our students with, with less than a thousand dollars. Or no, more than a thousand dollars less than the average community in the state of Minnesota. Correct.
Yes.
In total, Princeton Public Schools is educating our students with a, with over, with, with less than two thousand dollars. With two thousand dollars less per pupil unit than every other community in the state of Minnesota. Is that correct?
Well, not every other, because it is an average. But yes, the, the overall average, yes.
Okay, I don't know about the board, but I, I think that's, I think that's a headline there. That's a headline, is that we are providing a high quality trying to be world-class education to all of our students with less than two thousand dollars per pupil unit than they average in the state of Minnesota. And then you can also see that locally. And we're doing so with financial help of maintaining the board's policy of a ten percent fund balance. And trying not to have large variances every year where we're a district needing to make, you know, two million, three million dollars worth of cuts on, on any given year. I think that's a headline. We need to find, I mean, we need to continue to do good work, but we also need our community to, to know that. To me, that's a pretty big thing. I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are, but to me, that sticks out.
Well, I'm also looking at that same chart and seeing that the revenue per per pupil, per student has actually gone down three dollars to thousand seven, one one seven to twelve thousand. So our, our revenue's gone down. I mean, it's not, but it didn't increase as compared to the other, other years. Going forward. It's actually gone down just a
That we receive per pupil unit, yep.
Which you can't, you to stay flat like that is not, is not a good thing either.
I don't know how much, how long we'll be able to sustain. We'll continue to try and sustain with as long as we possibly can. And we've been able to, to sustain, thankfully. Maintaining our student enrollment has been significant for us because quite honestly, our demographic data studies that we've done has suggested that we should be declining significantly in enrollment every year. And thankfully, we're able to to keep fighting and maintaining our student enrollment. But it's I, we're going to have, I, I think that we'll have to find better ways to communicate to communicate this because I'm just, I, I think there's a disconnect between reality and some of the things I hear. Because quite honestly, I've heard more than once people say that we, our community is like the highest, we're taxing our residents the highest in Minnesota locally, which you can clearly see that isn't even close to be in the case. It's, it's the opposite. And I guess the question, the, the million dollar question for us and our community is you know, should our students be worth every bit as much as every other student across the state of Minnesota in terms of how much we're investing per student for their education? And that's where the great inequities come in funding in the state of Minnesota. Because you go to, you pick a community. You know, each student, they're getting, that district's getting more revenue than, than we are, for sure. We're on, we're on the, the bottom end of that in our state, so.
Are you writing any of this down?
It's, yeah.
So I got, you mentioned something about the, in, in slide is it slide fourteen, something about the hockey lease? Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so in the past, we had operating leases and capital leases and capital leases for, were like purchasing something and operating leases were more like rent. And the new accounting standard analyzed things and indicated that we should be recognizing districts and local governments should be recognizing an asset and a liability related to commitments for leases. So the hockey arena lease is a commitment. It's a long-term commitment. And you have the right to use that hockey arena. So it is
What line item would that be under or?
Yeah, so I don't know exactly what you're looking at, but if you look in the financial statements, you'll see a leased asset. And then you'll see a leased liability on the government-wide statements. On the fund statements, it shows here as another financing source, because it is a benefit to the district and then as an expenditure as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
So obviously, the board has opportunities to ask any more questions that you have. But if there are none, I think you're aware that we'll be asking you to vote in the action area to accept the results of this audit.
Are there other questions for Michelle or Nancy? Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for your hard work and your team. And KDB for your hard work as well.
Thank you. And before I go, I would like to thank Michelle and her team as well. They were very well prepared for the audit. And that makes our job much easier.
Thanks, Nancy, for presenting tonight.
Sure, thank you.
And I want the board just to know, I, I asked the question when we had our meeting with them. You know, every year I, I hear that, that we're, that Princeton is, does such a good job in their audit preparations and no negative findings from the audit. And I just had to ask, is that, is that just common everywhere? And the answer was no. Not common everywhere. It's something that we're really blessed to, to have such a strong financial team with this wealth of experience in our school district, so. Much appreciated, Michelle and
Yeah, we have a very good team in our accounting office. Couldn't do it with oh, Mary and Mary and Jake. Our accounting crew. They're, they're just awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, Nancy.
Night, thank you. So we'll move on to the action portion of the meeting to eleven A to second reading of policies. We looked at these last month. I will ask for motion to accept the second reading of policy. Motion made by Eric Mings, there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-one audit as presented.
So
Motion made by Eric Strandberg, second by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Eleven C, the Sarswell Agreement. I'm entertaining a motion to become a purchase and a member of Better Health Collective collective and approve the membership agreement and bylaws.
So
Motion made by Eric Strandberg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to resolution of canvassing the return of votes. I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district, general election as presented. Motion made by Chad and second by Don, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I'm also looking to entertain a motion to authorize the assurance of certificate of election. Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by John, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. There were no additions to the agenda. Future meetings are community and executive planning finance on the twentieth. We have only one meeting in, in December. Also, World's Best Workforce will be at five thirty. And truth and taxation at the bit. And then the work session following.
Yeah, just one, one addition there. I want the board to know that I will be sending you an email inviting if any of you to participate. We're, we're lining up tours of what is being recommended as some of the best career technical education facilities at high schools in, in our state. And we're lining those up and we'll be taking those tours. I think we set on the date of November eleventh, but you know, I'll invite a board member to, if it's something that interests you and something that, you know, obviously would work in your work schedule, which I know likely will not for some of you. But that invite will be coming. And we'll be bringing several teachers in those programs as well. And if we can even bring a community member that's maybe a leader of an organization or manufacturer in our community to come along with us too. November twenty-nine.
Say that again, November twenty-ninth? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By both Eric's, we adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.